All right. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our February 24th, 2025, meeting of the Lunenburg Planning Board. We are meeting here at the beautiful upstairs meeting room at Town Hall. If you are watching us online today, tonight, on Facebook, or watching us on PAC, you can always, well, come on down if you want to participate, or you can log into Zoom with your phone or with your computer. The Zoom link and number and everything are on the agenda, posted on the town website. This meeting is being recorded, and that's all we need there. Great. We are starting five minutes late due to a couple logistical issues that had to get ironed out, but now it's time to rock and roll. Okay. Before we start the rest of the meeting, would someone like to lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. First, as always, do we have any public comment? Seeing none. And for those who might be logging into Zoom, because we don't have anyone there at this time, but if you do log into Zoom, go ahead and use that hand raise feature. Great. Mr. Riley, our land use director, will not be joining us this evening, so there is no director's report, and we will move on. He is a bit under the weather. Diving right in with, we have an A and R, an approval not required for 589 Flat Hill Road. Is there, let's see if there's anyone in the...
Yeah, I don't believe the applicant's coming in for this one. It's pretty straightforward.
Yeah, I don't, that's not strictly required, so, okay. We have access to those plans and everything, right there on the SharePoint. Logan, you don't happen to know enough about this to give us a ballpark description, do you? And if you don't, that's fine.
Let me see, not off the top of my head, but I think I did have some notes.
We do have Mr. Riley's staff report.
Yeah, we do have, yeah, the actual...
The actual emailed one. Oh, never mind. This plan is properly prepared, and I recommend endorsement. That's the entirety of his report on it.
Yes, which is fine normally, but I just want to give a look, see, make sure we know what we are looking at. Okay. So they're cutting off a new lot to the, on the east. Well, I'm guessing, no, it's not really. North is up and to the left, so on plan left, they're adding a, cutting off a new lot, it looks like. I see plenty of frontage, well beyond what we require anywhere. Okay. Do we have any thoughts or questions on the plan, or see diligent eyes moving, so I can give us time as well? Not an issue. And topographic looks. Can't see how that would create any issues. Are people ready to discuss, or do we want more time?
I'm curious as to, so 579 and 589 are currently one parcel. Is that what I'm seeing here?
That is my reading of it, because they're calling out 579 as new lot area, and the other detailed parcel would be 589.
But they're also showing the easement, that small strip that connects it, 20.63 feet wide, saying that it's already been recorded. So I don't understand what's, what's being created here.
Where, where is that easement on the plan?
So when I looked at the locus, because I wasn't quite sure where this was, it shows, it shows just a strip of land from Flat Hill going to that back lot. Parcel A, okay. So they're taking, looks like they're taking Parcel A off of 589, 579, and giving it to 589.
Okay, yeah, I see that. I get that. All right.
Lot lines to be extinguished, okay.
Yep. Yeah, no, I see what we're talking. Okay, it's a little more complex than just not cutting off a new parcel, but that's fine. I see, I mean, overall, we're looking at two parcels that meet frontage requirements for the area and meet our zoning guidelines. They have gone to the Board of Health and gotten their report. Great. Is there any further discussion? Oh, go ahead.
So I'm going to mention that our bylaw says that anything under 20 feet in width does not count towards lot area, and, but this is 20.63, and I'm assuming it's continuous. There's no proof of that. But it does appear that the back lot is in excess of two acres, which I think is this outlining? Does it say?
I don't see it. Where do you see an area with only 20 feet of width?
At the Flat Hill for the back lot. I mean...
Matt, can I come over and just look at your screen? You can point to what you...
Sure, no, it's taken me forever to get it, to get it up.
Oh, okay.
I also have the paper plans here, if you want.
Oh, do you?
That'd be banger.
Doing it old school. This whole lot here, this is its frontage, 20.63 feet of frontage for this whole lot.
Oh.
Existing easement. Doesn't say existing, but it's already recorded and booked and paged, so it's existing.
Got it.
That doesn't make any sense to me. I mean, if, if, if this is the only change going on, and this is existing, I don't know what to do about that, but that's not adequate frontage.
Oh, I see. I was misreading. Yep, nope, you're right.
But it doesn't appear that that's a new lot line. So this is not 81X, right? No, obviously, it's an error. So that's what I noticed at first.
Yeah.
But there's no indication that that's changing, so the indicated change is Parcel A away, taking it away from 579. It'd be really helpful if there was somebody here to explain something.
It would be.
But again, it's, 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 we don't have the authority to deny an A and R, and within 21 days, it was submitted on the 10th, I believe. Yeah, so on, on, on the, technically, it should already be approved. No, 31.
So submitted on the 10th, then, yeah, we won't have another meeting in time.
So if, if it is the case that Parcel A is the only change coming away from 579 Flat Hill, then I don't see any issues, because it's already an existing lot with a 20.63 frontage.
Yep. All right. And our land use director says it does meet the requirements. We don't have the ability to get more details, that's fine. All right. Any other discussion on this? We could, so with the land use director's recommendation, I would, saying that it meets the requirements, even if we don't fully understand it, I would be very hesitant. I'm gonna accept whatever there's a motion, a second for, but not endorsing the A and R. We could do nothing. We could endorse. Declining to endorse doesn't, I don't know that we could, that that is a wise move with the land use director saying, no, guys, it's cool.
I agree.
So, great. We could either let time pass and have it happen, or we can endorse. The motion could be to endorse the A and R for getting the address again as listed, to endorse the A and R for 589 Flat Hill Road, if that's the motion someone wanted to make.
So moved.
A second. Moved and second. All right. All in fa, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Did anyone not?
Nope.
Okay, cool, great. All right. Endorsed. Wonderful. Thank you.
I've got the Mylar here. Anyone have a Sharpie and their little roars underneath?
No, but we can sign later in the meeting, because there's people here for business, and they're not going to take it with them tonight. All right. We have two zoning workshops up next on the agenda. Those were originally placed earlier on the agenda last week, because we had a guest coming in. We don't have a guest speaking this week, and in addition, we do not have our land use director here to workshop with. So I'm going to at least put those off till later in the meeting, and if we decide we, I don't know how much we could talk about anyway, and then we'll just pass them on. Public hearings. First for 494 Electric Ave, site plan approval and storm water management permit. This is a continuation from past several meetings.
Good evening. For the record, Bill Hannigan.
Do you have rent rings that Chris told her, or?
The what?
Rent rings, you have?
Don't, don't think so.
So I'm subbing for Chris today. He had a family emergency he had to deal with, so I'm coming here with some information that I believe has been reviewed. My understanding is that the last meeting, that the majority of the plan items were addressed relative to the peer review, the storm water management, the engineering comments have been addressed with, with respect to the plan set, and my understanding was the planning board members wanted to do a site review, take a look at the intersection of Pierce Ave and Electric. And I, my understanding on that is also that, that went relatively well, and then I believe that the, the board is in, at least has an understanding of what we're trying to accomplish with what's on the plans right now. So the, I believe that the discussion was centered around the crosswalk and the stop line and, and those items at that intersection, along with how is the traffic flow going to work. So what I'd like to do is see if there are any additional questions, or if those issues have been addressed, then we can, we can move on to whatever we have and go from there.
We do have that. In addition, it is, I know Town Council was waiting on the, I don't, I don't know the legal technical terms here, but the, the applicant's lawyer provided the report saying that...
The status of Pierce Ave.
Yes, the status of Pierce Ave, and my understanding was Town Council has requested the backing documentation for that.
Which I believe was provided.
Please.
So probably a week and a half ago...
You gotta go to the mic here.
About a week and a half ago, attorney of need for the applicant, about a week and a half ago, we put together an entire package. I had the title abstract, it was also an attorney, review everything, complete package, his abstract, his notes, all the indexes in the package, went to your planner.
Okay.
And I, my understanding is the planner then delivered that to your Town Council.
Yes. Okay, great. Wonderful.
All right. It's the first time he's got a complete package. We had an opinion letter from Attorney Pellegrini from the first hearing that outlines his research and his conclusions. So Town Council just wanted the backup information, which we provided.
Yeah, and Town Council, so Town Council has the information. He's going to look at it and give us some figure for what it will take to do the actual deep dive review. And I, again, I don't have the better terms for that, because I'm just...
Almost like a peer review, but with the, with the legal review, yeah.
Yes, yeah. And where, he was going to have that number. Chris may or may not have what that number is, but he's not here tonight to give it to us. So otherwise, I would be happy to pass it on and do that figuring. So we are waiting on that. That's just limbo as far as this board tonight. So we, yeah, but we did go, last week, we had a meeting on site and took a look at the site, and discussion on, yeah, the big concern was crosswalk location and everything. We have engineers saying, and I feel like I'm getting a look, maybe not, but if that's an incorrect assessment, say that, please. We have engineers saying this is an appropriate location. I got the feeling there were board members who I know previously felt it was not. I don't know current feelings, one way or another, and I think that's where we are. So I will turn to the board and say, what are our thoughts?
Yeah, one of my concerns was based upon the, the location of the current crosswalk, which I suspect no one in the history of the planet has actually used. So the one proposed here is certainly better than where the, the, the current one is. So overall, I think, you know, with, with the benefit of the, the site visits, I do feel as though this is a good plan. I think it could be a lot better with the previous points that I had made, but I, I do respect their, their professional, you know, and it's, I think it's good, a good plan.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm, I'm going to repeat myself again. I don't believe that this is ready to come to Planning Board. The ownership of the road, that I believe needs to be squared away and figured out, and not only that, if it is not Lunenburg's road, then we need an understanding of what they intend to do with the road and the present, the residents that are on that road. And if it's not a road, then technically, they could close that off. So, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, but it's not going to be just a lawyer talking to a lawyer and saying, no, it's okay, you guys can have the road, we don't want it.
All right, so let me, let me dive into that a little bit before. I know the attorney wants to dive into it as well, but there's, the status of the road is, I believe, what is what the question is, okay? What we're asserting is that the status of the road is that it's a public way. Okay, so Lunenburg accepted that portion of Pierce Ave. There are two steps to that. One is the acceptance of the way, and the second part of it is the conveyance of the fee within the road. The first part happened, the second part did not. It's not that uncommon, but, well, it is actually very uncommon. And usually, what ends up happening is that, then it would become a paper street, okay? Would be if, for example, if you had a road that was laid out and the town did not accept it, that, but it was still a road, then that would be a paper street where the, 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 the right to pass and repass over it would, would be basically limited to the people that live on that road or the surrounding area. In this case, the town actually took it as a public way, okay? Accepted as a public way. They never got the fee, though. That, that piece of it never happened. We, and it's, it happens so infrequently that the last time that this happened in a project that I was involved with was Research Drive in Lummester. And what happened on that one was the subdivision was approved, and the, the road was built with state funds, and part of it had to be that we had to get the acceptance of the roadway done. The city accepted the way as a public way, but did not accept the fee in the, in the street. They accepted an easement on it because of the fact that there was concern about contaminant, contamination in the area, and the city didn't want to own the contamination. Different set of circumstances, but essentially the same type of a, of a, of a situation. So it, it is out there. I think having the attorneys review it to, to, to make the board more comfortable about what the status of it is, is fine. Us being here to, to get a site plan approval for a parking lot and storm water management permit, I think is, is not ahead of what we're trying to do. We're trying to do both. We're trying to basically bring this to the town's attention, okay, which is why when we first filed this, we, we specifically said that the fee in the road is owned by the applicant. That's our position. We had information relative to that. Our, our attorney did title work on that, provided that information to us to be able to move forward. So that's why we moved forward. We expected a review of this, of this topic, but we did not expect it to be delayed as long as it has been delayed. So I, I think that the, the application is, has been submitted in, in an appropriate manner. It's just that the, the attorney review has just taken longer than we expected. So now we understand that the attorney review is now in process. We're going to end up getting a quote from the attorney about what it's going to cost him to do his review. That's going to end up having to be paid by the applicant, and then from there, I believe it's going to be paid by the applicant. Or is that, is that different than peer review?
That would be, that is the, that is the...
The typical mechanism.
The typical process, and is the, is my understanding of what the process would be.
Right. So then, so then from there, once that review is done, what we want to do as the engineer, we want to make sure that everything on the site plan is acceptable. Okay, so that's what we're trying to get pending that review, is everything else acceptable? And we believe that, from the conversations that I've been involved with, that everything else is.
Well, I, I guess the reason I brought it up again was because our planner and our building inspector and our zoning officer said that if that is a public way, this is not a valid application to Planning Board, because we don't allow parking on across the street from a business. Also, the quandary, the question was raised about, you're proposing 6,000 square feet total, I think, but anything over 5,000 square feet plus four different uses needs to be a shopping center application. I don't think we've gotten a shopping center application, nor do I believe we've gotten a description on the uses proposed in this new building.
Yeah, I, I think that that's something that we've, we've done. The information that's on the plan is, speaks for itself. There's three uses there that we're proposing, okay? Three, three slots. They're all anticipated being retail. I believe you just said that it's four or more requires...
Right, 5,000 plus and four or more, so it'd be larger with only three.
Right, but we have three, so we're not, we don't hit that threshold. If, so we have 6,000 square feet, that we said?
That's my understanding.
All right. So, so if, if, for example, we, we go forward and we build the building, and someone decides they want to go in and split it up more, they have to come back to the Planning Board and get an additional permit, and we acknowledge that.
Okay.
Okay?
So, but there's still no application to increase the size of the capacity for the, the restaurant either, which I can't imagine is not going to be done when he's got more than adequate...
He's not, he's not, I don't believe he's proposing to, to increase the size of the restaurant, right? No, there's no increase. This is more based, the parking lot is more based upon a need than a permit requirement relative to the number of seats within the building.
They've already increased the building. They've got a brick and mortar there where they had a tent.
And that was all approved by this board?
It was, right.
So I don't understand why there's, why there's an objection to us adding a parking in an area that we could use it, some additional parking, if this board already approved an application?
Not objecting, I'm asking why the, there's a reason you want 80 more spots.
The reason we want 80 more spots is because we need parking for events, okay? So therefore, if we do need to go back and increase the number of seats within the restaurant, that would require us to come back to this board for that permit, and any licensing board that may be appropriate.
Okay.
Okay?
This is going...
It's very, it's very public knowledge about how many seats we have. It's very public knowledge about how many parking spaces we're requesting. It's very public knowledge that we're showing three spaces and 6,000 square feet. Anything that we are not permitted to do by the bylaw, we are not permitted to do without coming back in front of this board or one of the other boards within the town of Lunenburg.
Okay, that's fine. And, yeah. So I guess, again, it's not going to be just decided between the two lawyers.
The status of the road is, is the lawyer discussion. Everything else in the plan is this Planning Board's discussion.
Exactly. So if that road is, is not resolved in your favor, then this is not a valid application.
If that road is not resolved in our favor, then, then we've, we've gone through the process, and, and that's, that's, that's our choice.
Not just you, but it's also the abutters, it's also this board, it's also our staff.
So obviously, we have a high degree of confidence in us, in our attorneys being correct.
That, that's wonderful, but I, I certainly am not willing to give you an approval on something that we don't...
We're not asking you for an approval tonight. We were asking you whether we feel that the site plan aspects of the project are appropriate at this point in time pending the legal review. That's what we're asking.
So, yeah, again, to summarize...
We anticipate this being continued, by the way.
Yeah.
Okay, we're not acting for an approval tonight.
My, my recommendation is going to be that we with, we ask you to withdraw without prejudice, and when you get this squared away, come back to us.
We're not going to do that.
And again, for filling in details for those who might be tuning in now and not over the past months, there's odd background about Pierce Ave and what the town did or didn't do, and what that means for the road. This intersects with our parking bylaw. When we redid the parking bylaw, because we had some big parking problems previously in town, we made it pretty, pretty lock tight. In retrospect, I wonder if we... In retrospect, I wonder if we did an overly good job, because if the, we don't have the ability to waive. I did confirm that with town council. We cannot, I say waive, I know there's other technical terms, but we don't have the ability to say, this still improves parking enough even if it's not onsite. That isn't allowed within our bylaw. So, it's correct, we cannot approve this until we have that answer. But it sounds like the applicant is looking for an unofficial, hey, do you have more questions or concerns? I mean, not unofficial, but yeah...
Oh, no, it's a, do you need anything else more from me as the engineer on the project at this point in time? That's all I'm asking for.
So...
And if that's, if, 'cause then we can sit back and we can continue to the next meeting, and if the attorneys aren't done, then we can just continue. But I wanna make sure that if we have anything else that you're waiting for from Hennington Engineering, that we're able to provide that to you along the way.
Love it. All right. So, not worried about the status of the road right now. Let's assume everything goes as the applicant expects, and this is, and it meets our bylaws. Do we have other concerns on the site plan level or on stormwater that have not yet been addressed? Please.
I know this has been addressed, but I just wanna bring it up again. The site visit, I think, went well. The sidewalk, the crossing area, I understand that. I'm not an engineer, so I, it was explained why it being closer to the road makes more sense, why being in that location makes more sense. I am still struggling, and this might be a failure on us because we didn't have anybody from DPW there, or anybody from, you know, Police Department, or Fire, or anybody come. My issue is still the entrance of the parking lot being on Pierce Avenue. To me, I cannot wrap my head around having all of the traffic coming in off of Electric Avenue, onto Pierce Avenue, entering the parking lot as being a safer place for people to cross, rather than having it cut in directly from Electric Avenue. I know it was brought up that there's been a lot of accidents. We brought up CVS as an example. The engineer said, CVS has had a lot of accidents with the cut-in, with the solo right turn lane that goes into there, but there's been no examples of accidents there. There's never been an accident there caused by that. So I don't, for me, I, did you have a question?
No, I'm trying to figure out who said there were accidents at CVS or not.
Your engineer said that it was dangerous. I believe he said that to...
I said, I know I talked to Chris Riley about adding a, it's termed a deceleration lane.
Yes.
Okay? I had concerns about adding it at this location because I thought it would make it more dangerous at this location. I don't know about anything that we spoke about at CVS.
Well, if from, I don't know who he said, I don't know where CVS came from, but it was the same kind of...
I know he was asking about putting something like CVS had at this location.
Right, which we've talked about before. And to me, I know I'm not an engineer, you might say, that's completely wrong, but to me, that seems safer, because then the only traffic that pedestrians have to deal with when they are crossing that crossing area is those coming in or off of Pierce Avenue. And to me, that seems a little bit less likely to have some kind of a pedestrian accident there, when the only people going down that road are the people interested in going on Pierce Avenue. When everybody can just go into the parking lot off of Electric Avenue, to me, that seems safer for pedestrians. And that's, I know we've been over that. I might be wrong, you might tell me I'm wrong. I wish we had an opinion from DPW, or from the Police Department, or from somebody who knows more than me.
Well, your peer reviewer could provide you an opinion on that as well, Graves Engineering.
They could.
Yeah.
I don't remember anything in there from Graves about that, but maybe we...
He didn't call out any, he did not call out anything.
Anything specific, okay.
Just so I still have the mic. The area you're speaking about is right here, okay? And so this distance beyond the crosswalk provides more than enough distance for a vehicle to park, um, not park, to stop.
To stop.
To stop.
In a perfect world.
Right. Well, that's why it's been set that way.
Right.
Okay? So this location, okay, anyone coming up Pierce, they're gonna have plenty of sight distance to be able to see them. Anyone coming out of the driveway would also have sight distance to see them, okay? For someone coming, starting at this location and moving across, okay? Cars coming from the north, heading in and turning in, there's adequate distance for them to not only see the person from, the sight distance to the pedestrian from back in here, to be able to see, as long as we don't put too high of landscaping in that area, they would be able to see them as well, okay? So adding a lane next to the lane, what that does, okay, is it prevents the natural slowing of traffic when you're behind a vehicle that has to turn into a street. The vehicle behind it is what I'm concerned about. If you give that person, if you give the person behind the vehicle turning onto Pierce Ave more room, any driver coming out of Pierce Ave is gonna look at this driver coming up with his directional line, hopefully, turning into Pierce Ave. When he pulls into the breakdown lane, his presumption could be, I'm good to go. And he's gonna pull out, and this guy's gonna go rushing by and broadside him. That's why I'm concerned about the intersection, and I'm not fully on board with putting in a deceleration lane in there.
But for me, the deceleration lane wouldn't be there, it would be past Pierce Avenue.
So Ms. Reed, you're thinking about if the, you were suggesting double with the curb cut and entry for the parking lot being on, on Electric.
On Electric, correct.
And a deceleration lane to get into...
At this, at this level of traffic, I wouldn't put a deceleration lane anywhere along this section of Route 13. I wouldn't do it. It doesn't, because of the fact that when you talk about deceleration, what you're talking about is high-speed traffic. You're talking about 50 mile an hour plus traffic. Now, I've driven on this road, so I know that the people drive on that road fast, okay? But a deceleration lane typically has to be a lot longer than what they have at CVS. That's more or less like an early turnoff than anything, okay? And I think adding either of those components to any entrance along, even down here, adding it to any entrance along Route 13, what it does is it makes it so that the person behind the person turning can speed past faster, okay? Which I think can be a more dangerous vehicular situation than leaving it the way it is. We all have to slow down for the person in front of us to take a right-hand turn, okay? That's kind of the concept. The pedestrian aspect of it is, where do we put the crosswalk? There's really only two places to put it. You can put it here, or you can put it here. I don't think it matters to us where we put the crosswalk, okay? So if the crosswalk in being more visible is at this location, Chris gave me some sketches that he put together in case this matter came up.
Chris Riley?
Chris, no, Chris Anderson.
Okay.
Thank you. And Logan, you're gonna need a copy of this. I was gonna say, I was gonna say, could you also send it electronically?
Yep.
Just to make it easier for Logan to get this in the public record.
Absolutely. So when Chris and I were reviewing this today, he was asking, he was telling me about this, and I said, well, what do we have for an option? You know, have we provided them with an option yet? And he said, well, we've talked about it. I said, but we have given them an actual drawing to show how it could be redone differently. This would be a typical crosswalk that you would have at an intersection. Stop line behind the crosswalk provides more room behind it where you're not gonna have pedestrians crossing, but the pedestrians would then come out to the street, go across, go along the front of the road on the north side of the parking lot, and then there'll be another internal crosswalk on Mike's property, on Ilforno's property, to get to the front door. This is viable, and if the board feels more comfortable with this layout, I don't think we have any problem with it, okay? Because, and truthfully, you're part of it is, part of the thought process of putting the crosswalk where we have it originally on this plan, is that if we have them go out to the street, they're probably not gonna use it. They're gonna come out of the parking lot and just walk straight across to the restaurant, okay? So that part, giving them a designated area to walk across the street was the premise of putting it in that location. But if the board feels more comfortable, because this actually provides a better crosswalk for the town in general, if the town then puts sidewalks up and down the road, then that crosswalk is already established, okay? So it's really, it's really up to the board as far as what they would rather see. We're comfortable with either one.
I suppose in defense of the original, like, when we went out to the sidewalk, the sidewalk, the current sidewalk, or crosswalk, was completely blocked over by snow. Like, it was buried there, so there wouldn't have been any way to access it. Anyway, like, there's a crosswalk there, but nobody could get to it.
Is that more, is that more towards the intersection?
Yes, the one that's currently there is...
More like that?
Like this, yes.
Okay.
And I was having the same thought that was mentioned, which is, I look at this and go, well, that's where I expect your crosswalk to be, et cetera. But I also know that people don't like using, they won't, let me rephrase.
Shortest distance.
Yeah, people will not use crosswalks on a, unless it is exactly where they're already going or necessary.
I'm from Chicago, we don't use crosswalks, period. We just walk wherever we want to.
I'll tell you what, bringing two kids to the city, all of a sudden, I suddenly become a crosswalk fiend, but I never was before, and I probably won't be once they're older, I'll be real. They're gonna cross from the parking lot as well, they're likely to not get onto the provided sidewalk or sidewalk equivalent walking area there, and will instead probably, I think there's a good chance, will walk in the exit to get across in the parking lot exit, and that would just further create pedestrian hazards. I like seeing it. It lays it out for me, and I look at it and go, oh, they're not gonna walk that way.
And that's the intent of providing it?
Other questions, concerns?
I would just echo the comments that Amanda had made. You know, it wasn't necessarily focused on just the crosswalk in and of itself, it was just the impact of the traffic coming into Pierce and then into the parking lot. As mentioned at previous meeting as well, we just, or I just feel, I agree, that if the traffic were to come in, into the parking lot directly from Electric Ave, say, closer to where the, on your plan where it says, remove existing driveway entrance, provide bit, berm, yes. So there's actually existing, okay, but the further, further towards Lomester, yeah. So just generally that area. If the vehicles were entering in there, even without a deceleration, I get your point there, it's very, to point, if you, if all the traffic was coming in and out of that parking lot, and whether those two parking lots were joined or not, but even if it was just isolated, if the vehicles were in and out of that area, that there actually is an opening there with like a chain across it. If the vehicles were coming in and out of there, and the pedestrians were channeled through the parking lot up to that park, up to the sidewalk, and then crossed, and as she had mentioned, then they would just be looking out for the residents, if you will, or a limited amount of traffic coming in and out of Pierce, so...
You're saying close that, that Pierce went off?
Correct. Correct. So that would also, the number one concern would be that it would eliminate the, not eliminate, but diminish the chance for vehicles to, you know, interact with the pedestrians. But it would also address the concerns from the neighborhood, that they didn't want excessive traffic coming through their neighborhood. So that, it would address two things, and the primary, the primary one would be pedestrian safety. But, you know, having said that, there was obviously some hesitation to make those changes because they were not, and I respect the fact that, you know, your profession, that it's, that's, getting back to my point tonight, it's good, it could be a lot better, but it's good. It's his property, it's his customers. I'm comforted by the fact that he's not trying to get his customers run over by, you know, cars, he needs them. But overall, it's a much better plan. Aesthetically, it looks really nice. It probably is safer than the, you know, as it is right now. So I think it's a good plan. I think there's a lot of room for improvement, but like I said, we need to be respectful of our businesses and encourage their growth and their success. And, you know, at this point right now, like I said, I just read, it's a good plan. I'm a little disappointed that it's not better, but I'm not the engineer, so it's good.
But you are the board.
Correct.
As a counter to that, I'm thinking of my behavior when I go places. And I think I prefer the entrance on Pierce Ave. And the reason being, I am never going to pull into the lot on the opposite side of Pierce Ave first. I'm going to go to the restaurant, I'm going to go, oh, shoot, there's the restaurant. I'm gonna turn in at the building. I'm gonna go in there, go see there's not a lot of parking, and then I'm gonna go to the further lot. We can have those people either continuing on through the lot, crossing Pierce Ave there, or, so we either have exiting Electric, entering Pierce, exiting Pierce, in more or less a straight line. Or we have entering Electric, exiting onto Electric or Pierce, entering Electric, exiting Electric again. And that's a lot more potential points of conflict for cars to smash into each other. Is kind of, because people are gonna wanna park close, right? That's, so I think I prefer the entrance on Pierce for that, as well as fewer points of entry on the more busy road. But I'm also not, I'm also not an engineer, it turns out. All right, but...
Well, what I try to do, and you guys, we've done a lot of work together over the years, I try to listen to what the board is asking for, and try to get a sense of what everyone's comfortable with. There's a thousand ways to do a plan. This is one of them. Maybe this is a combination of three or four of them into this version of this plan here. Chair's point is, I think where we're leaning, is that if you're driving north to Lunenburg, and you're gonna go to Ilforno, you're gonna take a left either into Pierce Ave and turn into the parking lot, or you're gonna go a little bit further and turn left directly into the parking lot in front of the building, because that's the focus is gonna be there. And, you know, it may be that there's sufficient parking around the building for lunch, but probably not for dinner. So what will happen is people will come in, they'll then go out, if there's no access to Pierce for the southern parking lot, or from Pierce to the southern parking lot, they'll have to go back out onto Electric Avenue, turn right, and then turn right back into the parking lot again. So that, that's another couple of movements that may not be desirable, okay? I think what will happen over time is most people that go to the restaurants locally are local people, okay? And what they'll do is, they'll know that if you're, if you go in there at 7 o'clock, don't even try to go to the front lot. Just pull into Pierce Ave and go into the, go into the parking lot there, okay? So that, I think that'll be how the traffic ultimately starts working on this. Lunchtime, people are gonna probably go to, go to the first lot first, but then they'll have the opportunity to go to the second lot. So there's a lot of different ways of looking at how the traffic will flow, especially when you have multiple entrances at multiple locations, and that's one of the reasons, quite frankly, why we try to separate and eliminate any access points on Electric Avenue except for the new, the new building. So that way, there wouldn't be any, you wouldn't have someone going into the parking lot thinking that they were gonna be able to get to the new building, then have to come back out and come around, or, you know, if they go to the new building, they know they're not gonna get to that other parking lot. So there is some thought behind it, but, you know, we do, we do a lot of work with different boards, and they have, you know, everyone has thoughts that might... everyone has thoughts that might, things might work better a different way. So I think it's healthy to talk about these things. I'm not saying that just because we're engineers doesn't mean we always have the absolute 100% correct answer. And I don't, I don't think that that's fair to the board, because the board does have the decision-making power on this thing. What we're trying to do is we're trying to make sure that we're, we're addressing all the issues along the way. Okay? So I know that that matter is still kind of out there with some people. So I, I, I think I, we may need some direction on that about, you know, when can we, when can we put the location of the driveway item away? When is, when are we done with that? And if, and if we're done with that tonight, then great. If we're not, then we, I guess we need to do a little bit more talking about it internally. So there's, there's, there's four or five ways we can do this. What we're trying to do is we're trying to think through all those processes ahead of time and provide you with the information of why we chose the way we did.
So I think that's a fair request, and also for the board, with the understanding that it's always good practice to be as upfront and knowledgeable about our future opinions as well as possible. By the same token, it ain't over until the document is signed, right? Until, or until we have a motion to vote to finally approve. But looking to communicate our thoughts on this, so the applicant and his engineers can respond, are we comfy as proposed? Are we comfy with, are we comfier with this alternate proposal? Are we comfier really pushing for a different angle? I'm, I am personally the most comfy with as proposed. However, that is exactly one voice on, out of five of us. So I turn to you and say, how do we feel? Is it good enough to meet your needs? Is it good enough to meet your needs, but you really, you want to advocate in the way of another thing? Are you a fan of this? Are you not okay with this? Where are we? I think that's a fair request, with the amount of time that's gone on, so we can try to help them narrow in.
I'll go ahead and be the third person to say that I'd rather see it off of Electric Ave rather than Pierce. I think that you could combine it with one of the two curb cuts, the, the northerly curb cut for the new building, quite easily. And then, and then another reason that I'm thinking that is, how large is that parcel behind you that's cut off from this?
Well, that's all residential.
How large is it?
It's only going to be three building lots.
It's going to be three building lots?
Right.
Are they going to be like the Whalen Road building lot?
No, 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 three single-family homes is what we're, I believe that's what we're leaning towards right now.
I, I heard discussion, and I don't know who I heard it from, so I'm just going to say, the grapevine, let's put it that way.
That. We're going to erect the Empire State Building on that property.
That, that could be eligible for this new MBTA zoning, 15 units per acre.
Everything in Lunenburg is eligible for that.
So you're going to, you're going to tell us that it's going to be three single-family homes right now?
Well, unless.
I'm going to say no to that because of the fact that I, I hadn't even thought about that aspect of it, quite frankly. But once again, through this board, whatever approval we would need to do, to go through, to get that approval from this board, we would have to run through, which probably.
Tight our hands are going to be on that one too, right?
Well, it's, I, you're asking me to answer questions about something that's not on the table.
No, I'm, I'm asking the board to realize that there's further development down Pierce Ave.
Right.
And that's going to simply cause more traffic and more vehicles and more daily trips.
Well.
And that, and that's mainly to support your point that you'd rather have it come off Electric, so that.
Exactly.
Okay.
Exactly. Thank you.
That would only be the case, though. That is only an option if the board were to decide that that is an appropriate location, that, that, that an area including that is the appropriate location to do the dense development zoning required by the MBTA Communities Law. We may well not put it there. That's kind of a separate discussion.
When's the last time we didn't give the nasty end of the stick to Whalen? It makes sense.
I mean, Matt, Mr. House, I don't think that's an answerable question. Like, what, what are we calling the nasty end of a stick? What, I mean, no, I, I agree. In certain ways, Whalen, Whalen is one of the areas we looked at and said, it could make more sense there. We've also talked about the possibility of being able to bring in Tri-Town in that area to account for a large portion of the development that needs to happen. So I don't think we have, I mean, I don't think we, any of us really have an answer of where MBT, of where the MBTA Communities zoning change is decidedly going to go yet. We haven't had that talk.
I, I think, I think from, I mean, he, he brings, he brings up a good point. Are we going to develop it with more than three family houses? Well, I mean, if that, if that is, is zoning possible and economically viable, then, then I think that we would have, we would have to take a look at it. Why wouldn't we? That being said, I think that the entrance on Pierce could be conditioned that if the development outback generates more than X amount of traffic trips or is, is more than three units, that you move the entrance over to Electric Avenue. And that could be part of the future permit. I think that provides a safety net for the board.
That's interesting. To me, anyway. So it sounds, it sounds like we have three board members. Mr. McClellan, I think you're in that, who.
Well, going back.
It's a preference.
What's that?
It's a preference.
Right. And go, and going back to my original statement, I tried to keep it simple initially, was that it's good. And, you know, I, I wouldn't, you know, good, you know, not to be overly complex, but good is good. And it may not be exactly, you know, what I, what I was expecting. And tonight's discussion was good, the, the points brought up by the chair, you know, as well as Mr. Hannigan. And it's, and again, just deferring back to the property owner, I know that's a little bit of a stretch with the pending legal advice, but it's his property, it's his business, and this is how he deems it to be best for him. And, you know, the point of someone, their initial focus being the, the, the main parking lot, with the parking lot directly, directly in front of the restaurant, you know, people pulling in there as the, their, their target is a, is a good point. So. I would be more inclined, you know, back to your point of it's, it's not over till it's over. I'd be more inclined to support this plan, despite my disappointment that, you know, I personally think it could be, that the points mentioned could be better, but I defer to the property owner and the engineers, having heard those, those concerns, you know, considered them, and present this plan, which I think is good.
So I think what you're hearing is a board with some complex feelings. And I, I, I wish I could just distill it down to, of course, this is the solution that will be best going forward. If you can read that, bully for you, because I don't know the best solution for meeting the board's needs in this case, because there's some differing opinions.
I'd be interested to see what the vice chair says, since he's the only one who hasn't spoken about it.
Matt's point of going from Electric Ave to the main lot to Pierce, back to Electric Ave, and then into the parking lot made a lot of sense to me in terms of the, the addition of conflict points. So keeping the entrance where it's currently designed does make sense to me.
So I'll take that as we're going to leave things alone for now, and we're going to wait to hear back from Leo, once we have that process done. So we'd request a continuance to the next, the next planning board meeting. And if we have to then continue because Leo's not ready, unless Jeff has something he wants to add.
Now, I am, before we, oh.
Go ahead.
Go, no, so I just want to make, I do want to make sure we get public comment in as well. So before, we're not going to, if you want to speak first, I'm fine with that, because I just want to make sure that we do get to the public, we're not going to continue without public comment. That's all.
Okay.
My only request tonight would be, and I think there was an email exchange about this. Mr. Muhammad is desirous of constructing this canopy between the two buildings. The project's been delayed. He was hoping to get it installed before the weather hit, and we're kind of in the throes of it. And the purpose of the canopy is to provide a shield between the two buildings. So I'm just going to ask the board tonight, I mean, the reason it's on this plan is because we went to the building inspector, asked for a permit, and he said, yep, and it's really, it's really not a big deal. I'm not going to try to mince it any other way, but, sorry. It's really not a big deal, I'm not going to say it any way, but, but because it's not shown on the site plan from the prior approval, he won't issue us a permit to install it. And it's going to help tremendously in relation to protecting his staff and his clientele in between the two buildings. And to me, you know, this board could probably vote on that tonight, and we'd be able to get a permit.
We can, I don't believe we can vote on a component of this plan separately. What I would rec, what I would recommend is, I think that the addition of the canopy could be tacked, I know exactly enough to be dangerous here, so I would confirm whatever I say with Mr. Riley. But I think that if you were looking for, to get the canopy up, which I understand completely, one way to do that would be to take the project that's related to that canopy, the, effectively the last one from a few years ago, and tack it on as a de minimis change after the fact. I mean, we just did a de minimis change for something that was like 30 years old. So being a few years old isn't a big deal. And I don't know all the requirements for what makes something de minimis.
I'll get with the planner.
Yeah. But I think, talk to Mr. Riley about that. That should be, I think that can be brought on as a de minimis change to the old one. And then the board votes on if we find it to be a de minimis change. And if it is, that is something that could be squared up at our next meeting, so long as things are taken care of, whenever that paperwork has to happen.
That's all I have. I'll take it up with the planner. I'll get him in email tonight.
Okay, great.
Thank you. Back to you.
Okay. This is a public hearing. I do want to make sure that people have the option to speak. So if, oh, we have a hand up. We have Mr. McDonald.
Good evening. How you guys doing? Can you guys hear me okay?
Yep, Dave, we can hear you.
Hey, hey, a couple of things real quick. I'm sorry I couldn't make it tonight. But one thing I want to mention, or a couple of things I want to mention is, as we go on, you can see the economy is not really good when it comes to businesses, especially small businesses. Just so you know, Outbacks just quit overnight. They just shut down. And again, I'm, I'm an advocate for bringing business into town, either restaurants, stores, mom and pops type businesses. And I think what you guys are doing is good. You want to do it the right way. And Mr. Chair, I'm not a planning board member, so let me know if I'm out of line. But there's always a solution to something to get things going. And I know El Fornos has gone through some building issues. I, I think, again, what it's, we have to do as a town is start looking at how could we can help them not keep delaying things, not having a building inspector come down and not try to help the tenant and get them approved. If you look at the parking situation, and again, I, I understand what you're saying, guys, but I don't know what Mike wants, and I, I missed the beginning. Did Mike mention what he wants, what entrance he wants?
Who's Mike?
The owner of El Fornos.
He was asking if Mr. Muhammad said what he wanted for an entrance.
Yes.
I, I admit, I tend to assume the applicant wants what they've asked for in the application.
I mean, I would like to hear what the, the owner would like. And the other thing is, Mr. Chair, I know there's some purchased land across the street. Could you put in an order of conditions that when that development comes to you, you reevaluate this? And if it's, has to be corrected, it can be corrected at that time? But I think the guy should be, I think this business should start to succeed and start getting behind all this and let them concentrate on serving the town of Lunenburg. Again, my opinion, Mr. Chair.
Great. Thank you, Mr. McDonald.
You guys have, you guys have a good night, and at least the weather's warm too, by the way.
Oh. I meant to wish everyone, I wanted to be the first person in government to wish everyone today a very happy you can see the black on your driveway day. Because, good golly, I missed that. The white ice got old. Okay. So, all right, any other public comment? Mr. Pease.
Bob Pease, 11 winter Green Court. Mr. Chair, when, when I was on the Planning and Zoning Commission, we often had applications like this where it's not clear what the path forward is to get to an approval. And I, when we were doing that, I would often take and do a straw poll, where I would take, it's, it's, it's a moment in time, you know, and I would go down and I would go to every single applicant and ask them, well, where are you on this, on this thing? And I wouldn't let them off the hook. So, because that gives the applicant an idea of what, what's my best way, you know, what's my best path forward, you know, to get to an approval? And I would urge you to do more of that. And I just want to say that tonight, to, to say that this should have been applied for as a shopping center when it's clearly a restaurant, that we should be worried about something, a residential application that's not part of this process, and it's not before us, that we should be worried about, you know, the MBTA law as it applies to this application, and that they should withdraw their application after what, how, I don't know how many public hearings have you had so far? Is the antithesis of working with an existing business to help them succeed.
Thank you. Thank you. There is also a retail component as well that we have not been notably discussing because it's more minor, but thank you. All right. Any other public comment? Seeing none. Anything else from the board? Seeing none. I turn to the applicant and say, do you want to continue to our next meeting in the hopes that we will have the, I mean, hopefully by then we should have that number from Town Council, be able to say, vote yes, put those funds into escrow, and get that all sorted out? Would you like to continue to our next meeting or further out?
When, when is the next meeting?
March 10th.
March 10th.
Which is caucus, which we have on the agenda to discuss.
Ah.
So you may not have a meeting on March 10th?
We haven't discussed it yet, so I don't know.
That's fair. We always have. What, I, it sounds like we need to have.
What's the next meeting after that?
After that.
24th.
24th? If we could get a continuance to the 10th?
Yeah, we can.
And then if we, the likelihood of the attorneys being done by the 10th is not high, but it might be something that happens quicker than we think. So let's, let's go for the 10th, and then from there, and then if you have something that has to be postponed anyways, then we'll be, at least be ready for the 24th.
Great. Think that works.
Motion to continue. Site approval plan for 494 Electric Avenue to March 10th.
And the storm.
Oh, sorry, and stormwater management permit.
At 6:05 PM.
At 6:05 PM.
At 12:00.
Moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. We will move on to site plan approval for 801 Northfield Road. The next three are all brand new.
I brought water. Don't worry. I'm ready. The Lunenburg Planning Board will hold a public hearing on February 24th, 2025, at 6:05 PM, Town Hall, 17 Main Street, Lunenburg, Mass, to hear and review an application for site plan approval pursuant to 250-8.4 of the Code of the Town of Lunenburg by the Town of Lunenburg. the Code of the Town of Lunenburg by the Town of Lunenburg's Conservation Commission for construction of a parking area at the Reyno Conservation Area. The subject property information, the location is 801 Northfield Road, Assessors Map 38, parcel number nine. Owner is the Town of Lunenburg Conservation Commission, 960 Mass. Avenue, Lunenburg, Mass. 01462. You can view materials online at lunenburgma便portal dot opengov dot com slash search via an email request to the planning office, c riley@lunenburgma.gov, and l o'connell@lunenburgma.gov, and also in person at the planning office at 960 Mass. Avenue in Lunenburg, Mass.
Excellent. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Greg Roy with Dillison Roy this evening representing the applicant, which, as you noted, is the Lunenburg Conservation Commission in this case. So just a little bit of history here. I'll try not to dwell on this, but the Lunenburg Conservation Commission received a grant for this project to, and I'm not sure who that was through, but it was a grant nonetheless, for the construction, improvement in construction of a parking area to access the conservation land. So we're here tonight to seek the site plan approval, as you referenced, portion of that permitting process. I just wanted to put it in the framework of the larger picture. Actually, in this case, this is the only permit that we need, other than a driveway permit through the DBW, which we are aware that we need to obtain. We wanted to go before your board first. But we've actually been able to design this project completely outside of the jurisdiction of the Lunenburg Conservation Commission. So there's no, there's actually no jurisdiction here in the buffer zone to a wetland area. But we're here, here tonight, the proposed project utilizes an existing access to the property, which is currently being used as a access for the logging operation. Just for context, if you take Northfield Road west from Route 13 and you go towards Settlers Crossing Golf Course, if you can all have a visual on that, I think some of us are really familiar with that section of town. You go down the hill, and we're labeling it as Northfield Pond. It might be called Kelly's Pond, is on your left. And immediately after the pond is the property that we're talking about. So the property actually has, owns a portion of the pond, and there's a, there's a chunk of upland land just to the west of it. So we're proposing to utilize the existing, it's kinda difficult to see on the plan here as I point, but the existing access that goes into the property from Northfield Road to the south, again, that's being currently used for the logging operation. And then we'd be creating a gravel parking surface for, large enough for 10 vehicles, to park to access the conservation land. The, we're here tonight because your bylaw is fairly liberal relative to what needs a site plan approval. And it's really any, the creation of any amount of parking on a non-residential project, I believe. So that's why we're here this evening. So it's a fairly straightforward project. We are, we did put in some stormwater management. We're not within a jurisdictional area, but we're close. So we have a, we've sort of pitched everything towards a swale, which then goes to a small stormwater management basin. But it's fairly, fairly routine here, a fairly small application, as far as you normally are used to seeing. I think that's all on this one. I wanted to be brief, and I'm happy to take any questions that you folks may have.
This is, this is not for, this doesn't trigger stormwater management permit?
It does not.
Stormwater built into the-
Right. It does not. We built some stormwater in there because it's a town project, quite frankly. And if we were 10 feet closer to the wetland, we'd have to have it anyway because the Department of Environmental Protection would not give us an exemption from stormwater management. So you have it here because it's really good practice from a gravel service. But it does not, it, we are not over 40,000 square feet of alteration. And it otherwise would not trigger your, your stormwater bylaw.
Okay. I will turn to the board for questions, comments, thoughts. Then I will also open up for public comment. We've got the plans in front of us. What questions do we have?
I hope the fee was waived.
I think the fee was waived. Yeah, thank you. I think the fee was waived. We appreciate it.
No, it looks good.
Yeah. All right. I'm gonna, hearing nothing else from the board for a moment, I am gonna open up for public comment. Please, so what I do, I just need you to come up and speak at the microphone, and start by giving us your name and address, and then share.
Hi, my name is Michelle Matthew, and I live on 914 Northfield Road in Lunenburg. And I was just curious where exactly that parking is going in. I've had, you know, people coming back and forth on the dirt road, and I was just wondering if it's going to be, because the address was 904. A 904 is Settlers Crossing, looks like Settlers Crossing's land. So I wasn't sure if it was there, abutting there land, or in the front there, next to Stagecoach, where Northfield Road is, if it's gonna be in the front, or where it's gonna exactly be, because I didn't have a chance to look at the plans.
Do you know where the abandoned house is on Northfield?
Yep, way down at the end of Stagecoach.
Yeah, so a little confusion. So we have two applications this evening.
Okay.
So one is Reyno, which is not near the Table Rock land, which I think, which is the one you're speaking of, right next to Table Rock. We're gonna talk about that one in soon, the next hearing. This one is further east towards Route 13 and on the opposite side of the street. Yeah. But we are gonna talk about Stagecoach in a few minutes, because that's a, it's a separate hearing. So this one is not near that section. But I will answer that, I will remember that question, and I will answer it when I talk about the next application.
All right, because we already have parking across the street.
That's right, yes, on that.
And I'm hoping that's where it'll stay.
So that, we'll get to that one when we talk about-
And I don't even mind it so much.
I'm gonna pause this, I am gonna pause this for a moment, because what we're discussing is another public hearing that we haven't opened yet.
I understand.
So we'll get over to the, I don't have the, the 994 Northfield?
904.
904. Thank you, 904 in a bit. Right now, we're gonna look at the 801. And so we have to take things in, for legal reasons, in proper order and everything. Any public comment for eight, the site plan approval for 801 Northfield Road? Seeing none. Oh, Mr. Pease?
Bob Pease, Levin, Wintergreen Court. You know, presently, that is being logged. We're gonna take, and, or the Conservation Commission, the logger's gonna take and leave the skid trails, selected skid trails, clear, to create trails.
Nice.
And the logger is gonna clear the area of the parking lot. And the public will be able to use that fairly large piece of conservation land that's never had any public access before, due to this project. But, you know, between the logging and then the creation of this parking lot, there'll be two fairly substantial loop trails in there. And we also hope, at the far back corner, to be able to get a little access across the parcel. It was to be the lettuce farm, so that you'll be able to go directly from this parcel over to the Parks and Rec parcel, that's farther up the road, on the left-hand side as you go up the road. And so you'd be able to take, park at this lot, go all the way around, go through the Parks and Rec land, go up through Table Rock, go all the way up, and end up in New Hampshire. So.
So if you wanna get lost, we got you in style. Great, love it. I like hiking off Northfield Road, but that's me. All right, turn to the board. Do we have any questions, thoughts, or concerns about the site plan approval? I'm hearing nothing. So, nothing from the public, otherwise. So we could look for a motion to approve the site plan approval for 801 Northfield Road with standard conditions?
We need to close the public hearing.
Oh, you're so picky. Follow the law. Okay, you're correct. If there's nothing else, do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion to close the public hearing for 801 Northfield Road.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So now, we could have a motion such as to approve the site plan, the site plan approval for 801 Northfield Road with standard conditions.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Bang-a-rang. Got that one squared away.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is 994 Northfield Road.
The Lunenburg Planning Board will hold a public hearing on February 24th, 2025, at 6:05 PM, Town Hall, 17 Main Street, Lunenburg, Mass, to hear and review an application for site plan approval pursuant to 250-8.4 of the Code of the Town of Lunenburg by the Town of Lunenburg's Conservation Commission for construction of a 10-space parking area, parking area for the Table Rock Conservation Area. Subject property information, the location is 994 Northfield Road, Assessors Map 37, parcel number 15. Owner is Town of Lunenburg Conservation Commission, 960 Mass. Avenue, Lunenburg, Mass. 01462. You can view materials online at lunenburgma便portal dot opengov dot com slash search via an email request to the planning office, and in person at the planning office at 960 Mass. Avenue in Lunenburg, Mass.
Thank you very much. Again, Greg Roy, for the record, Greg Roy, Dillison Roy, I'm representing the applicant, which, again, is the Lunenburg Conservation Commission. A little bit more to say on this one. Same spiel as before. This is another site that the, for which the Lunenburg Conservation Commission received some grants to improve and create the, a parking area for access to the property. Again, we're here tonight because it's the creation of 10 parking spaces, which require site plan approval through your board. In this case, we also have work within jurisdictional areas of the Conservation Commission and the Wetlands Protection Act. So it is not a project that could, that is eligible for an exemption to the Massachusetts Stormwater Management Policy because it is not a residential project of four or fewer lots, which is essentially the only exemption that the Wetlands Protection Act gives you unless you're doing an emergency road repair project or something like that. So this project, like the other one, but this project requires compliance with the stormwater management policy. So we have also submitted, along with our application to this board, but also to the Conservation Commission, associated with the notice of intent, a stormwater management book. And if you are having trouble sleeping at night, you can pull that out and read a few paragraphs, and that'll put you right to sleep. But I wanted to just go over this a little bit more broadly. Immediately to the west is the Settlers Crossing Golf Course. So this property abuts Settlers Crossing. The, you tee off on one towards this property, if you will. So the, the green of one is sort of, you know, adjacent to this property, a little bit further off the street. And it's immediately adjacent to Stagecoach Road, which on the plan is planned right, kinda where our details are with the erosion control barriers. It goes in and up, way up into the, into the, the property to the north. There is, as the, as the, one of the previous speakers mentioned, there is a parking area in this area of town, which is immediately across the street on Northfield Road from where we're proposing the access. It is not, however, on land owned and controlled by the Lunenburg Conservation Commission. So if folks are familiar with this process from a few years ago, these two pieces of property were, I guess, I'll say acquired by the town through a couple of different mechanisms. One of, in the law, I'm not gonna summarize it, but what ended up happening was the land on the northerly side of Northfield Road, which is the subject of this application, ended up being owned and controlled by the Lunenburg Conservation Commission as conservation land. The land on the southerly portion was, I think, purchased by a grant through the Parks Commission. So it is owned and controlled by the Parks Commission. And I believe Parks has some long-term plans that I'm not really aware of on the southerly portion of that property. I know they're focused on other portions, other parks in town currently, but I do believe that they have some other, some long-term plans. So the Conservation Commission is seeking to construct a viable parking space for access to their property, which only exists on the northerly side of Northfield Road. And we're trying to do this in a manner that sort of solves some of the logistical issues that we have with Stagecoach Road. I think that the ultimate plan here is to create a separate and distinct access point to this land that does not need folks walking up Stagecoach Road to access the property, which is currently the way that that is accessed. So this would be, the parking area would be several hundred feet west of the, of Stagecoach Road, and would be, you know, squarely in the center of what is owned by the Conservation Commission. And then the, the plan would be to access, construct new trails. Bob, please nod if I'm, or nod, nod if I'm saying something incorrectly. Would be to access, would be to create some new trail accesses through this portion of the site that would completely bypass and separate pedestrian, vehicular and pedestrian traffic from Stagecoach Road, because there are some residences on that, on that road. And so it solves some logistical issues. We do have a pending application before the Conservation Commission. We opened that hearing last week. They continued that, that meeting. We did receive a few comments from them that we'll be addressing relative mainly to conservation-related issues, such as some wetland replication and planting specifications that we provided. And we also got a few comments from the Department of Environmental Protection as part of that process, which we'll also be responding to as part of the Conservation Commission project. So I don't necessarily think I wanna ask you to close this one, because I wanna make sure that you're approving the same plan that's approved by the Conservation Commission. It just makes it easier. But I certainly would like to hear any comments that your board has, or any comments that the, the audience might have, so that we can incorporate everything into a final set.
I do have two questions off the bat. One is, you have to comply with stormwater.
Correct.
Does this need a stormwater management permit? Or does, because I don't think this applica, I don't think we have that application, correct?
That's correct. It does not need a stormwater management permit through your bylaw, because it does not have 40,000 square feet of alteration.
Okay, but you still need to comply with, got it.
It's through the Wetlands Protection Act.
Yep.
So I know this gets confusing, but there's a lot of different triggers that can happen with stormwater management. In this case, the trigger is through the Wetlands Protection Act. It's triggered through that.
Understood. Just that, that, that changes the-
Right.
...et cetera. Right. My second question, and I should have asked this on the last one, too, and I apologize. Northfield Road is a scenic road in town.
Yes.
So are we chopping down any trees or disturbing any walls that would require that application?
Excellent, thank you. I did mean to bring that up on the last one. So retroactively, we're not doing any of that on the other one. Just to sort of go, okay. But on this one, we're not doing any of that here either. So we're actually, I'm gonna go over and point real quick. We, we survey-located the, the portions of stone wall that exist, and there are no portions that exist on the portion where we're, where we're seeking access, which is shown in the cross-tatched red area. That's the proposed driveway. Also, the, the place will- Also, the, the, the place that we proposed to cross was selected really because of the tree situation. So we're trying not to take down any trees, we have to take down a few as you get back into the site, and of course, there'll be some in the parking area. But all of the green blobs that you see on this plan are all of the existing trees that we survey-located, and you can see the ones by the road, which are on the, the lower portion, we're not proposing to take down any, all of the, the, the road is all being done in an area where there's no, where there's no trees. So there's no scenic road-related issues on either of these two applications.
Great. Okay, I will turn to the board, and then I will turn for public comment. Do we have questions regarding this application?
I'm glad you mentioned the, the scenic road, because I was also thinking the same thing, that we should have asked on the previous one, but...
I saw the trees on the plan, and that...
So, so, just, just FYI, we only need, the scenic road only applies to the right-of-way?
Right.
So there was, there must have been another reason that you survey-located?
Yeah, for the Conservation Commission has an interest in the trees within the 50, well, within the 30-foot, but with, really within the 50-foot.
There you go.
No touch of the wetland, yeah.
Good point.
Yeah.
And I, I would, I kind of would like to have seen it go off Stagecoach, because it's already an existing opening, but as you say, there's no stone walls. And it's, is it, I don't think it's going to be even paved, is it?
No, gravel, yep. Yep.
No, that's all I got.
Okay.
My questions were the same.
Great. I am going to turn to the room for public comment, please. And although you already have, just please go ahead and give your name for the record and address for the record again.
My name is Michelle Mathium, and I am from 914 Northfield Road in Lunenburg, right off of Stagecoach Road. Looking at my property line, I am just wondering where exactly this is going in, is it going in from Northfield Road on the side, or is it going to be going up a little bit? Because I, right now, I have problems with people parking at the end of Stagecoach Road, and also parking on my land where I have my own parking lot on Stagecoach Road, so, if I'm looking at that, where my land is, and you're going to put a driveway, not a driveway, sorry, a parking area across from there, in the, in the middle of where my land is, then I'm going to have more people parking there, so I'm kind of worried about that. So if you look, this is, this is old Stagecoach Road, this is my land, but my land also goes a little bit on where you, where the cut is over here, um, on 904.
With your permission?
Mm-hmm.
The, um, this, this is the edge of that wetland area there.
Okay.
Which is, we're actually proposing to be like down here by probably close to 200 feet, so the parking area would kind of be over that, so not anywhere near close to that lot line.
Okay.
So, and it would have access off of Northfield. So the, the whole intention, I was instructed, we don't want to utilize Stagecoach Road anymore.
Mm-hmm.
For vehicles or pedestrian traffic, so really, this is trying to resolve that sort of mog-standing logistical issue.
All right, so it'll be somewhere around here?
Yeah, down the road, path to the west, is what we're proposing.
And then you guys are going to do a path to go all back? That would be great.
That's right, so they'll be completely through there without having to access Stagecoach Road.
Okay, all right, great, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Love it. Other public comment?
Hi, Laura Karen Gustis, I live at 19 Burke Street, Lunenburg, I'm one of the property owners of Settlers Crossing, and this is Tanya Evelyn, she's my superintendent and groundskeeper.
Manager.
And manager. So, we have some issues.
Concerns.
Some ver, yeah, some concerns, I mean, if you want to s...
So...
She's more familiar with the layout there.
With the land, but so from what we're looking at, this parking looks like it's going to be behind, obviously, he said, our first green and the second tee box. Couple concerns, one, who, we have our own, you know, our parking lot for customers who, you know, they know that they're putting their vehicle at risk, they're parking at the golf course, we've had numerous cars get golf balls in the windshield. So, who will be responsible if, you know, I have someone driving up the first fairway, and they, there's tons of balls in those woods, and they overshoot it, and we hit, you know, they hit a car in this parking, who's responsible for that? You know, who's going to protect these cars, is there going to be a net put up? Like, they used to have a net that ran along Northfield Road, because it used to be like a driving range way back when, and we took it down, obviously, because it's, you know, they don't hit over there, it's, it's further up. That was one concern. A second concern is, how are you going to stop people from parking over there, grabbing their clubs, and just walking onto the second green?
Which they have done, I mean...
We've had people grab their clubs, walk up to the first tee box, and I've had to go, hey, you need to go in and pay, like, this is not free golf here. So, you know, how is that going to be?
To, yeah, to prevent the public access, you know, to our course.
Because we can't see it by the second tee box.
Because we've had people out there hiking who have come onto the course, not realizing where they are, I mean, they're non-golfers.
Oh, up on the fifth?
Up on the fifth.
Would the trails come up in the upper woods over there?
Because we have an upper, upper tee box, I don't know if any of you are golfers, but it's way up, and it's an artificial turf, that type of thing. But we have had people hiking in the woods, or motorcycle, no, dirt bikes, dirt bikes.
Come out to that tee box.
Come out to that tee box. So, I mean, the public is coming onto the course, and, you know, one of the concerns is, somebody could get seriously injured.
In a golf ball.
Yeah, with a golf ball. And then, the other issue, which is kind of really concerning, is the wetlands. We have, as it stands now, we have in the spring, I mean, we have rivers running through sections of the golf course, and particularly on that side, there's a large pond down by our fifth, well, our fourth green and our fifth tee box.
And there's a pond to the right of the second tee box.
Of the tee box, um, two, you know.
And that water runs straight across.
Right.
When it floods, it will run straight across the fairway, over to one, and down.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, so, we have a concern about how it's going to impact the golf course as far as, you know, the wetlands and that type of thing. I mean, there's areas of the golf course that we have to rope off until sometimes June, you know, into June, because it's just so wet, you know, people take a car, they're going to get stuck, so, I mean, oh, you're ankle-deep in mud, I mean, it's one of the...
And my, and my only other thing is, you know, I have the police on speed dial, because we have numerous issues with people just in our parking lot, I mean, we have a streetlight, I have a big sign posted, no loitering, um, I, I still have to call the police. I've had cars park there, um, doing inappropriate things that I have happily knocked on the window, been like, you got to go, go up to Walmart, go someplace else, but you can't be here.
Drug deals.
We've had, we've seen drug deals passing go by, I've had a domestic that I had to interrupt last year, so it's like, and, and, and we're here seeing this, so I can call the police and have them come. So our question is, is that going to be a patrolled area, is someone going to keep an eye on this, because, you know, and I'm not trying to say anything bad, but college students are going to be coming back, and it's...
And we do, we do see an increase.
In our property damage.
Damage.
When school comes back.
When the college comes back and...
And we've had numerous things damaged.
Right, yeah.
All right, I've heard you express a good handful of concerns. I will want to turn to the, would the applicant like to respond to anything there, at this time?
I'm not sure, actually. Do you want to respond?
Bob Pease, I was a conservation, on the Conservation Commission, but I'm still doing one heck of a lot of work for the Conservation Commission. And when we, um, well, first, I'm going to address the other ladies' concerns. When we first talked to Greg about designing this parking lot, um, we said, you know, we wanted to take and make an entrance directly off of Northfield Road, uh, to get away from people going up old Stagecoach Road, uh, because first of all, there's two residences on that, on that, on that old dirt road. And, you know, some of the residents, and, and you're walking up, part of it's paved, there's old utility poles, it's not like you're on conservation land at all. It's, it's not, it's not very aesthetically pleasing, and it annoys the residents there, you know, and so we're trying to make it so that people don't go up Stagecoach Road to access it, and that they don't park on it. We're trying to take, create a separate parking area for people to park, and so it's also so they're not parking across the street. You know, when we acquired that land, I was, I, I helped Brandon when we acquired that land, you know, through the Parks Grant for the south, and the Land Grant for the north, and in order to get the grant, we had to show that we could furnish two parking spaces, and we had no money to do that, so we put some gravel on the other side, we put that sign, and supposedly, that's our parking space, but really, it's, it's across the road, it's not safe, um, and so we're trying to establish now proper parking, you know, so people can access this resource, because there's a lot of beautiful land up there. And we want to keep the lot as close to the road as possible, so that the parking lot is visible from Northfield Road, uh, but, you know, because people worry about what happens in a parking lot, you know, that isn't monitored. But I, I would say, you know, we have a similar parking lot down on Holman Street.
Yeah.
For the Lane property, and, uh, we've had very minimal, if any, problems down here, at least that have come through the commission's attention, you know, through the police department or anywhere else, you know, with, with problems down there at that lot. As far as the golf, but, our, the concerns I heard were golf balls, uh, um, uh, you know, hitting the cars in the lot. No, I'm not quite sure how, I think, I think the lot's going to be fairly, you got to scale, how, how far are the cars going to be from the property lines?
Correct.
And, and where, I think... But, but, they're about 100 feet, and that, that's going to be one heck of a drive to, to get all the way over through the woods.
If we're going, so I apologize, if we're going to speak, we do need to do at the microphones, so that it's on the recording, and so our friends at home can hear. So I, I don't mean to cut off, just, yeah.
And, um, and, um, so that was one concern I heard. We, we do have little placards we can put up at all the property lines that say Lunenburg Conservation Land, a proximate boundary, you know, so people know when they're leaving the boundary, uh, when they're leaving the property and getting on, going on to Settlers Crossing land, you know, and Settlers Crossing would be, you know, free to take in, you know, a poster land, but actually, in a different venue, I'd love to talk to you about, about that, and the trails that are on Settlers Crossing in the back, but, um, and, um, you were concerned about people leaving this parking lot and, you know, sneaking onto the golf course, and, and I don't know what I can do, tell, tell you about that, but we spent a lot of time and, and energy to purchase this land for the public use, and it's got three points of access right now, it's got one on Howard Street, uh, it's got one off of New West Townsend Road, uh, and neither one of those, you know, are really that, the, those lands are fairly narrow, not good for parking, you're going to be in someone's backyard if we put parking in either of those places. And then we have this, this is the best place on the property to establish a parking lot, we're trying to do it to address, you know, the concerns of the people on old Stagecoach Road, um, and, uh, and, I mean, the wetlands are the, I'm not sure what the concerns are about the wetlands, because, I mean...
Oh, sorry.
All right.
If I, if I may. So I said at the onset, thank you, Bob, and thank you for your comments, too, appreciate it, I'm a golfer. And I'm a bad golfer, so, uh, yeah, I certainly can, and I, I, I do frequent the course a lot, so I, I understand what you're saying. The, um, the thing with, with wetland protection and stormwater, I think I heard stormwater kind of in there, in that vein, is that, I said at the onset that this project is not exempt from stormwater management, and that's really why. So there's a, a real small subset of projects that the Department of Environmental Protection, which is, again, is just for everybody in the room, is the state of Massachusetts, not the town, so that's sort of overarching regulations statewide. They do not exempt a project like this from stormwater management, so that, we have to comply with 10 standards. One of those standards is to make sure there is no more off-site runoff after you finish your construction than, than is the case in the pre-developed case. So we have to do an extensive analysis, which we've done, and again, I'm not going to bore you with the details here, um, we had to do an extensive analysis, calculations, size the stormwater basins that we're showing on the plan to document compliance with that. We also have to treat the water, we have to make sure that we take on any fines, what we call total suspended solids, TSS is the abbreviation, and we have to make sure that we're removing those things before it gets discharged to the wetlands. So overall, um, the Department of Environmental Protection, through its stormwater management regulations, which again are state regulations in this case, um, uh, those regulations exist so that some of those metrics are, are taken, are taken into account, so, um, and in fact, some of the comments that were raised by the Department of Environmental Protection that are referenced as part of the Conservation Commission process that we opened last week, did have to do with a few questions they had on our stormwater design. So, the state does promulgate the regulations, and they do act to enforce them, uh, so I just, I just wanted to make sure that I, I said that. I, I don't know what else I can say, other than that, um, the Conservation Commission, they're a client in this case, but they're also, um, a review, a reviewer on, on the process, and they gave me some comments and questions and things to ask, uh, things to look at as part of their due diligence, uh, in the review process, both under their state Wetlands Protection Act, but also under the local Lunenburg Wetlands Protection Bylaw. So, uh, there is checks and balances that are happening relative to wetlands protection, so, and we're not proposing anything that doesn't meet the performance standards, and believe me, the Conservation Commission will not give a permit if we, and the Department of Environmental Protection certainly wouldn't, uh, wouldn't condone it either if, um, we didn't meet those standards, so, that, I think that's where I'll leave it.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Oh, you just, you got to speak at the microphone, is all?
Hi, my name is Michelle Mathium, from 914 Northfield Road, I was just curious how you're, how they're going to get to, what is it, 804 Northfield Road? The one, the parking area that's going to be in the back?
Think that's a separate, that's a separate property, is it?
It is a separate property, it's the one we were talking about prior.
Yeah.
But how are people going to get to it? Are they still going to use Stagecoach Road?
No.
No? Okay.
So that one, that, that one that we were doing previous is further down towards, um, Route 13.
Okay.
And right before you get to the pond, on the opposite side of the street of Stagecoach, that's how that'll be accessed, so, pretty, quite a bit aways, I would say.
It's...
Yeah, maybe not quite a half mile, quarter mile away, yeah.
Between the abandoned house and the pond.
Right, right.
All right, thank you.
Nope, thank you, appreciate it.
Do we have any other public comment on, um, on this public hearing for 994 Northfield Road? Seeing none? Board, we know that the applicant is not, is going to be looking for a continuance because they want to make sure this is the final setup. Do we have any other questions, thoughts, or concerns for the applicant before we work on a continuance?
Did you, did you walk the site quite a bit before?
Yeah, so we, we did, this is all, this is all an on-the-ground survey, um, of course, the wetlands were delineated, we survey-located all the trees in the woods, I'm laughing.
I was just wondering if there was a lot of golf balls in the immediate area.
Oh, um, I, I don't, I don't remember seeing any, but I can't.
Yeah.
I wasn't looking for them either, so.
Okay. All right. Mr. Pease?
Uh, Bob Pease, Lubin Green Court, I just want to mention, um, I, I went up through that property, uh, trying to find a place to put a trail that would go directly from this parking lot, straight up to Table Rock, um, and first of all, I never saw any golf balls, um, so I'm not sure how many people actually drive a golf ball, well, you know, that far into the woods. And second of all, we've started, and we've surveyed, I, I... of all, we've started, and we've surveyed, I flagged the entire route of the proposed trail. And I had a lot of difficulty because the property line's not straight. And there's a couple of places where Settlers Crossing's, if you look at the property map, where Settlers Crossing's land comes substantially in to what you would have thought would have been a rectangle of land, you know, going up to where Settle, or Table Rock is. But at any rate, the whole thing has been flagged. And at most every Wednesday, I go out there with one or two neighbors. And we're working our way up from the parking lot towards Table Rock, you know, to create a trail so the public will be able to go up through the middle of the woods, through some fairly scenic areas to get to Table Rock and all the other stuff that's up there farther deep in the woods.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Pease. Okay. I would, when do you want to continue to?
Um, I, I think we could do the 10th because we're gonna, we, we have everything in front of us relative to Conservation Commission. We're not waiting on anything. So it's just a matter of us getting the, the plans revised and they're not significant planner visions. So I think we could be ready to go for the 10th if you are going to have a meeting. I know it's caucus.
We have on our agenda later to discuss.
Yeah.
The 10th. So I'm happy to continue to then, I just want to make sure.
Understood. I heard you. Yeah.
Great.
Yep.
All right. So we would be, we could have a motion to continue the public hearing for 994 Northfield Road to our March 10 meeting at 6:05 PM. So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for your time. We have one more public hearing. It's a public hearing kind of night for 110 Pleasant Street.
The Lunenburg Planning Board will hold a public hearing on February 24, 2025 at 6:05 PM, Town Hall, 17 Main Street, Lunenburg, Mass. To hear and review an application for site plan approval pursuant to 250-8.4 of the Code of the Town of Lunenburg by Peridus Contractors for construction of an addition to the existing shop building on the property, adding approximately 1,092 square feet to the garage slash equipment repair space at the rear. The subject property information, the location is 110 Pleasant Street, assessors map 95, parcel number 16, Lot 2. The owner is 110 Pleasant Street LLC at 110 Pleasant Street in Lunenburg, Mass. 01462. You can view materials online at lunenburgma portal 700 dot opengov.com slash search via an email request to the planning office and in person at the planning office at 916 Mass. Avenue in Lunenburg, Mass.
All right. Take it away.
Thank you. Folks, again, for the record, my name's Greg Roy with Dillison Roy, representing the applicant this evening. We have a site here that is, as you mentioned, located at 110 Pleasant Street. For your reference, this is right next to the former location of the Woodery, if that rings any bells. It's just to the plan north of, of the, the site. It's currently, it's owned commercial. It's currently used as a contractor by a local contract. It has been historically used by a local contractor for commercial purposes. It was recently purchased by another local contractor, Peridus Contractors. And they are seeking, primarily use the existing facility as is, but they are proposing to build a, approximately a 1,300 square foot addition to the building, which is shown on your plan here in peach color. And that is more than a 25% increase in the building on a commercial lot. And that is one of your triggers for site plan approval. So in this case, we are not proposing any modifications to parking. There's adequate parking, which we've documented on the site plans. We're just looking to, to build a, an addition to the structure in the back relative to Pleasant Street in the back of the existing building, primary building. There's an existing storage trailer. I'm not sure if anybody's had a chance to go to the site, but, or if anybody's familiar with the site. But in the back, in the, in the area within the footprint of the new building, there's an existing storage trailer that's, that's there. It's a temporary structure, but it, it is there. And then there's a shed structure that you can see a smaller rectangle if you have the plan, sort of on the southerly side where the, where the L portion of the, the smaller portion of the addition, if you will. Both of those structures, both the temporary storage container and the, the shed would be removed from that area. So essentially, it's just an expansion. The, the use of that building is really a shop area, garage door bays. And so the applicant has proposed to add a, an additional bay on the southerly, I'll call it the south westerly side of the building. And that is really it. We did, we did issue with all of these applications, I guess, I just, I guess I got a little bit sloppy. We did issue our, sort of our standard package here. We went through all of the metrics of your site plan requirements. This one again, doesn't trigger, uh, trigger, excuse me, stormwater management permit because we're not proposing anywhere near 40,000 square feet of, of alteration. But we did give you a memo, sort of outlining the metrics of, of, of stormwater metrics, if you will. The area where the proposed addition's going is either impervious with a, with structures or is really hard-packed gravel. So there's really not going to be a significant difference in the stormwater runoff after the addition of the roof. We are aware of a comment from the Board of Health relative to wanting to do a Title V inspection. The applicant doesn't have an objection to that. So that's certainly no issue. And I think I'll leave it at that. If there's any questions, happy to take them.
Okay. I turn to the board. And just seeking clarification, you're not, it sounds like you're not looking to wrap this up tonight because you still have to do the Title V work. Is that correct?
I, we, I mean, if you feel like you need to keep it open for that, I, I think that's kind of a separate track. I, I don't see how that relates.
Okay.
We're happy to. That's out there. I don't even know if you need to condition it.
Okay.
They're not going to give, I think the comment by the Board of Health was that they want to see that prior to a building permit.
Got it. All right.
So that's kind of a separate process. I just wanted to acknowledge that it was an application, a comment as part of the application.
Perfect. Thank you. That, that's, that clarifies. All right. Back to the board. Questions? Thoughts? Seeing none yet, but quizzical faces, I'm going to turn and ask if we have any public comment on this. Seeing none in the room? Seeing, we have no one in the waiting room, correct?
Uh, yeah.
I assume, but.
Just us.
Okay. All right. Turn back to the board.
I'm seeing 110 Pleasant Street and on our GIS, it looks like a vacant lot. But I'm seeing 104 Pleasant Street that looks like it's got a similar configuration of buildings. Can you speak to that?
Yeah. When I search 110 Pleasant Street, I get a residence. Just having some confusion with the address.
Uh, okay. Uh, let's see if I, did I give you the deed?
Just off of Google Maps, it tells me that, that 110 Pleasant Street is somebody's house.
Well, I gave you the deed. And it was owned by, the deed conveyed in, recently here in August 2024 from Robert Proctor and Ann Proctor to 110 Pleasant LLC. And it's the, it's the subject property. So I'm not sure if there's an issue with GIS or.
I see, I see it now. It, it's in the aerial, obviously, because it's there. The GIS just didn't have the footprint of the buildings.
Ah, okay.
Not a big deal.
Gotcha.
I was actually trying to see how big that Lunenburg piece is next.
Oh, yeah. So Lunenburg isn't a butter. Yeah.
It's a huge piece.
It is. Yeah.
So this is just.
So if the building was slightly smaller, we wouldn't be here.
Yeah.
It's just that we triggered the 25% threshold. So.
Yep. And it's just the existing garage and office space. And you're adding that kind of.
L.
L-shaped, chunky, L-shaped addition.
That's correct. Yep.
All right. And what is the, and that is blacktop surrounding or?
Yeah, there's a blacktop apron that goes around. So the parking spaces that you can see that we numbered are all unpaved areas. So that, that line that's sort of a little bit skewed to the building is the edge of where the gravel is. As you come in, there's an apron of asphalt around the building where the parking is. And also in front of the garage door bays, which are on the north westerly side of the building. So yes, the answer to your question is yes. It's an existing asphalt apron.
So just adding more building on top of impermeable.
That's correct.
All right. Other questions from the board? Thoughts, concerns? To me, this feels pretty dang straightforward at this point, but I don't know if, the feelings of others.
Seems pretty straightforward to me as well.
Yeah.
All right. If we have nothing else and no concerns to discuss or bring up while the applicants can answer questions, I will see if we want to close the public hearing.
Sure. Motion to close public hearing for 110 Pleasant Street.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion on that? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great. Public hearing is closed. Time for deliberation. Seems, yeah, I mean, again, to me, it seems like, okay, great. We could have a motion to approve the site plan approval for 110 Pleasant Street with standard conditions.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Rock and roll. Thank you, sir. All right. Because Mr. Pease is here, I am going to move us from the decisions we have on the agenda to the MRPC GIS contribution for a Conservation Commission because we don't have to take, take up more of Bob's time. At some point, you can go home. And this is, Mr. Pease, this is just, this is the same thing we do pretty much every year where we don't have a use for the, at least to my knowledge, we do not have a use for these work hours and you do.
Yeah, I, I spoke with Chris about this. Actually, last year, no one used these GIS hours.
I think you handed it over. I'm so sorry.
Because, well, that's, but that's because I didn't do any map work last year.
Oh, okay.
Last year. And they were supposed to be devoted to, there was a MRPC itself applied for a grant to do a regional, to develop regional bike, no, I'm sorry, regional trail plans, regional trail, trail visions, you know, for all, all the towns and, and the participating towns in the region. And I signed Lunenburg up for that. And as part of the condition of applying for the grant, you had to devote your eight hours of time, you know, to the implementing the grant. But they didn't get the grant. And I didn't do any map work last year. But I'm hoping to do map work this year. The maps for the lane property, large town forest, the maps for Table Rock, and the maps for small town forest and Hunting Hill, all need to be updated. And it'd be great if we can get it done for free rather than the Conservation Commission having to pay. I think it's now up to $84 an hour for the work. So, and you got eight free hours. And Chris said he had, he, he said, I, I just don't see who are ever going to use these hours. So, so I'm asking, you know, could you, once again, authorize Chris to take and have, say, you know, that you guys have voted that they can be turned over to, to the use of conservation for trail mapping. Thank you.
Great. Yeah, the, these are hours that are kind of in our bucket, but we, every year I've been on the board, we've signed them over because we typically don't have a need for them. Do we want, is there any discussion on this?
No, that's, that's, that's my recollection. I don't remember ever not doing that. And I don't remember when we started or, I, I think we started when Adam came here.
Mm-hmm.
I think, I think. And, and I think that the entire time that Adam was here, we did this.
Yep.
It would be nice if we, it would be nice if we understood why the state thinks that we need those hours and, and, and understand what it is the state thinks that we should be doing that we're not. And I've mentioned that before, but since we don't have any idea, and our land use director's already said that he doesn't have an idea of what we're supposed to be doing with them, I am all in favor of granting the conservation request.
I don't even know that these come from the state. It might be from our MRPC membership or.
Okay.
Yeah, okay. That's why I thought, I say, anything to a state. Mr. Pease did say bingo for the record. Yeah. So, I mean, we have it because we're the planners, so we have the membership. There we go. We could have a motion to authorize the land use director to assign our, our MRPC GIS contribution to the Conservation Commission for trail mapping.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Bob, take care of our trails. Thank you so much. If you haven't ever had a chance to hike the trails, the many trails we have in town, do it. There are many that are, while not strictly accessible, are certainly more accessible for those of us with shot knees. And they are beautiful and a lot of fun.
Table Rock is hands down one of my favorites.
Yeah. And I go off of Holman regularly with a pooch because I can. All right. Okay. So I'm just going to keep us in board discussions for Citizens Caucus overlap, March 10 at 7:00 PM. As like, as per every year, the Citizens Caucus overlaps with our meeting. And the Citizens Caucus is the, they nominate people to be on the ballot. Do we have a problem with overlapping with Citizens Caucus?
I, I was hoping to go. Last year was the first time I've ever been to a caucus. I had, I'd never, they didn't, they didn't do that back where I came from. So, but is what it is.
And I'm up for reelection. So if I decide to go another five years, then I would, I don't think I'd need to be there, but it's a good showing. I never really, really appreciated when people that weren't there got nominated, but.
Fair.
And, and it does almost every year, the Monday.
I mean, we're not obligated to hold that meeting then. We could look, we could find a different time. We could not have that meeting.
I think we've done it a couple of different ways before. I think that we might have started late or we might have taken a break.
Didn't we start early last year? Did we come like a half hour early?
Oh, there was a year, I don't know if it was for this, but there was a time we started early and like bam, bam, bam.
When I got nominated, we started early.
Okay.
My year.
But that requires, I, I do not anticipate our agenda on the 11, on the 10th will allow for, since we have two public hearings continued to the 10th. We could certainly look to start afterwards if we'd like. I, that would be like a eight-ish PM start. It's getting late.
Yeah, I'm not thrilled about that idea.
Well, the alternative is the membership that wants to go to the caucus rather than be at the meeting would only impact the quorum if, if nothing's done about the meeting.
Yeah.
So if we don't have any special permits, special, special, not stormwater, special, but.
Real special.
Right. Then, then three people would be adequate. But.
That was, that was my thought. I, I don't want to be like, forget about you. That was, that was my thought, I, I don't wanna be like, forget about you, but by the same token, that kind of lets us split the difference as needed.
One second to confirm, but I think we might have a special permit, special, special for them.
Oh, well, that would be good to know.
Oh, sorry, are we talking about, we're talking about the tenth, not the twenty-fourth?
Yes, yep.
Yeah, let me... Yeah, never mind, I'm thinking of the twenty-fourth.
All right, great. So, and knowing that quorum could be an issue, we can tell applicants they probably don't wanna schedule onto the tenth, then. Great, is that how we wanna handle it?
Sure.
Yep.
All right, sounds good to me, bang-a-rang. Don't really need to vote on that, 'cause we're changing nothing. Cool. We have our decisions for 558 and 560 Goodrich Street and 255 Sunny Hill Road.
Yes, which would you like first? If you're getting to them online, they're on the left-hand sidebar under decisions, like where it says home, emails to the board, there's a decisions tab there, and I also have the paper copies right here.
I'll hand the paper copies down, I have them. So, this is pre-signing, we should review and just make sure everything is all set. Do people, assuming people wanna take a look at them, we should.
I do. You do want the paper copies, gotcha. Sorry, I thought these were just...
I'm just gonna excuse myself for one second while y'all review.
How many, there's, there's two decisions?
Yeah.
And are they two or three pages?
There's two distinct decisions, I think, for 560, one is the stormwater, one is the special permit for common driveway.
This one's just stormwater.
Stop it. What?
Logan, can you, can you point me to the place on the, on the 255 Stormwater? Can you point me to where it says something about the maintenance requirement being on the deed?
Sure thing, let me look through this.
I didn't see it. Maybe it's a special condition, I'm sorry.
For which property were we looking?
255 Sunny Hill. Didn't see it from control effing through, but I'm reading it end to end right now, just to make sure.
Oh.
The closest thing I could see is in seventeen, the last sentence of that paragraph is continued maintenance of this area in a manner which assures permanent stabilization and prevents any soil erosion will be the responsibility of the owner of record of the property. Which is in the vein of, but not the same as the require, explicit requirement to record it on the deed.
Yeah, and we had that requirement so that it was...
Transferable, the requirement of the maintenance transfers with the property.
Right.
I don't think it, the...
I don't think it's needed to be on the deed to be transferred, I think we had it on there so that future owners had some kind of information, so that there was...
Guard against...
Not so it was legally transferable, but so that it was practically transferable, if that makes sense.
I thought that's why we required it to be recorded with the deed, so that...
No, that, that's what I'm saying, that's why we had that, that's why we added the deed recording.
But I don't think it's on...
No, it is not.
Okay. And I'll also mention on the same one, the special condition, I think it should read a final review of the site shall be provided by peer reviewer, not the plan. I mean, I can look at the plan all day and say, that looks like the plan, yep, but I think the intent there was to purview the site after construction.
I thought that one was because, I thought that special condition was because there was something minor that, I thought we just basically, I thought there was something minor that the peer reviewer still needed to say, yeah, okay, that's good, and we, I don't think that was the, checking the site afterwards, I think that one, that special condition was about some minor, I think issues even as strong, but unresolved, they had fixed something for the peer reviewer, peer reviewer had not yet gotten back and said yes.
Well, I still don't think it's gonna be a final review of the plan, because that's what we're doing by signing these.
I am going, hate to do this to an applicant, a lot, but we're missing a condition, we don't have the exact wording that we know is correct, that, that will be correct and binding there. We have a question about a special condition listed, and I don't know that we have the answer on exactly what the context of that was. We voted, but I, I don't think we can sign, I, I'm not convinced we can sign this one yet.
I agree.
Was that, I agree?
I agree.
Okay, great. You're on the left side of me now that I'm over here, I don't hear anything on that side.
So, project address, 560, okay, common driveway, stormwater, yeah, 558, 560. So likewise, as far as the, the legal requirement for the maintenance on these two, 558 and 560, the maintenance, and then also the, the agreement between the owners of the common driveway, right, for the maintenance, is that on here? I think that would have been a special permit, I mean, a special condition as well. And I don't see any on the stormwater.
So, assuming it's the same standard conditions as the last one, which is should be, won't be there for stormwater.
So the legal framework must be provided for continuing maintenance of common areas such as homeowners association to be recorded on all property deeds herein, that's on the common driveway. But we still don't have, well, I mean, do we have the recording of the maintenance and agreement for the stormwater?
On the, on the stormwater permit specifically, not the common driveway?
Right, 'cause that, that special condition, I'm pretty sure covers the common driveway, doesn't it?
Yeah, I think that does, 'cause we're just saying, hey, you have to set up a legal framework, it's not, it's not our business to dictate what the legal framework is, we're just making sure they do it, right?
That one exists, yeah. I'm not seeing that on 560 Goodrich's stormwater, but let me...
So I'm looking, looking at seventeen, it doesn't read the same, probably a different...
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not seeing it.
Yeah, it looks to be the same standard condition, so... I would, speaking personally, I am personally comfortable signing the decision for the common driveway tonight, I'm not comfortable with either stormwater, unless we knew we had the correct wording, and I don't know that we know we do have the correct wording for the deed recording. So that's where I am there, I don't know where others sit.
Okay, yeah, so the standard conditions for both stormwaters are the same?
Yep.
Okay. Appear, appear to me to be the same.
I, I compared multiple points, and they were dead set, or dead similar, identical even, one more second. Okay.
These windows. Now, since, I, I, I think that was our first common driveway for the new bylaw, right?
I don't think it was.
I think 728 Goodrich Street may have been, I don't know if that was in, under the new one, or just before the new one, but I've seen that address tossed around a lot in the record.
That was, yeah.
Mr. Colometta.
Now, I remember saying something about with multiple units, you had to have a sign directory, and I don't remember having seen any pictures, not a huge importance, that was a requirement for the fire department, so if they're responding to a fire, they knew which leg to take to which house that was supposedly on fire.
Right.
Or, or deliveries, packages, so you don't have to go on Facebook and say, who's got my package?
We do have a requirement for a sign, but...
But we've passed the point of...
Yeah, I'd say, if we mess that up, we mess that up, they still have to have it.
I think we did mess it up.
Yeah. All right.
Yeah, I guess so, sure.
All right, so...
The common driveway one, right?
I've heard from Matt on this, I just wanna make sure others are in agreement with, okay, great, so we're happy to sign the one of three.
All right, I'll take it.
So just sign away?
Uh, if it's the, the one you're intending, yes, the common driveway. Yeah, just put your signatures on anything, who, who cares?
I've got pens.
Sure.
A pen. There you go, sir.
Thank you.
Do I need to sign the last page too on that one?
Uh...
No.
Said Planning Board, further certifies, da-da-da-da-da, yeah, I think that's...
There are some forms, like, there, there are some decisions that exist where I have to sign separately.
Separately, yeah.
Yeah, okay, as chair, cool. Great, woo-wee! Another board discussion was review of standard operating procedures, but that really needs Chris, I'm gonna put that off, 'cause, unless there's objection. Abutting community notices, is there anything big bad that we need to, or big good that we need to know about?
Nothing that is major, there were two notices from the Lancaster Planning Board, both were, well, one was from the Lancaster Planning Board, one was from their zoning Board of Appeals, both at seventy-one to seventy-five Main Street regarding a 2,000-square-foot addition for truck repair, and don't believe that's particularly close, so... Side thing about these, would, I'll, I'll check with Chris if this is like possible and kosher, but would you prefer to get these in kind of just like a when-it-comes-in format, almost like a newsletter-type thing, instead of trickled in at meetings specifically? Just, so if there was something where you recognized an address and said, hey, I know that place, this could be a thing?
Would we like just to get these notices from Logan put together as appropriate more frequently and in email?
I think this is quite adequate.
Okay, okay.
Just my opinion.
Yeah, I'm fine with it.
Sounds good.
All right, great, okay, and going back to that, all right, committee reports, Master Plan Steering Committee.
We have a meeting scheduled, and I know we have enough people for it. But, still, one thing to do, I would like to eliminate the two vacant positions, there's two remaining vacant positions, and just to ensure that meetings are easier to make, I would like to eliminate those two positions. They've been vacant since we started.
I hear you on that. If you, I would, my personal thought...
Yeah.
Is, if you know that...
You're gonna have quorum.
Like, barring unforeseen craziness. Could we wait on that until after that meeting, in case the committee has other thoughts and things, I mean, if you, if you think it could be a threat to it, I'm open, I was just thinking, we just rearrange the committee, and I hate to rearrange again, so we can rearrange again?
Sure, I can leave it open to the, the steering committee to see if they wanna do that. It would drop required quorum from seven to five, or, sorry, from six to five. At the moment, we've got, we either have eight or nine, I don't know if I'm included in that eight, so we are fine for quorum at this point. I still do have some people that haven't responded, but I do have enough people to have the meeting.
Great.
So, it's March third, next Monday.
Okay.
That was originally fifteen people, and we, we, we knocked off three?
Three.
To have a total of six, I mean, a total of twelve, which is half of six.
Yep.
Now, in conversations, I, I don't recall, I'm pretty sure you always round up, because you typically wanna have an odd... Now, in conversations, I, I don't recall, I'm pretty sure you always round up because you typically want to have an odd number of people. But I don't, but someone said to me that you take the membership and divide it by two and add one for the quorum. And it's somebody that has been involved in town government almost as long as I have, so I'd never even bothered to look it up. But if, if it's plus, if it's half plus one, as far as a, a quorum requirement, then they're still at 17, I mean, seven. And, and you say vacant, does that mean that there was nobody appointed to the position ever, or that the person appointed to the position never showed up?
There's never been somebody appointed. It's the select board and the zoning board of appeals. Nobody ever stepped into those roles.
Select board never had someone?
They did have someone, but then he left. Was it? Was it Frank?
I think it was Mr. Frank.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
He was there and then he, nobody filled his vacancy.
Gotcha, okay.
I wouldn't be against, if, if you'd be willing to accept the motion, I wouldn't be against moving to remove two more people, but two more, two more spots, not people.
I, I will, I will certainly, I, I was sharing my personal opinion. I'm certainly happy to accept the motion.
If we do have somebody originally in select board, I could extend to them to see if they want to refill that position.
I'll hold.
I have enough to have the next meeting, so that gives an opportunity to see if they want to put somebody in there or not.
Okay, that makes sense, and then we can get the input from the steering committee of what they would like to be, and that will help.
Sure.
Great. Open space committee.
Yes, so we are still working on the 100 Townsend Harbor Road property. We didn't have a full, we had enough for a quorum, but we didn't have the, the full committee, so we are still waiting, waiting for a, you know, a full board to, to discuss it. It still remains the same. There's a lot of interest in it, but there is still a lot of, a lot of work, and it would, it would be a, a good topic for the review standard operating procedures in, in, in the future. Because it did come up as to, like, they're still talking about it because a citizen had forwarded them that letter indicating that 100 Townsend Harbor Road was coming out of chapter. So we just need to streamline that process, like it was, it was, it was indicated that they hadn't actually formally been requested to review the property from the planning board. So I, I kind of took responsibility for that. I, I was there and, you know, could have provided better guidance in, in that, that aspect. But I think that would go towards the standard operating procedures. If, if and when, or when we get it set up through open gov, and I'll stop in at some point to chat with Logan a bit more on that, but I think it would just be clear that once that you, property came out of chapter and that email came through, that that would essentially be the notification of our, you know, our desire to hear their, their thoughts or assessment based on the, the six criteria. So I, I think, you know, that, that's, as I learned the process myself, you know, it's, it's, it's tough to be the, the point, point person on something you don't know a whole lot about. So it's, it's becoming more, more clear to me. But I, I think it is, it is important, even, even as I wrap my head around that, the fact that they just are, and correct me if I'm wrong, we're just assessing the property based on those six criteria, and we would essentially just forward that score off to the, the board of selectmen, and that they ultimately are the ones that will make the decision whether to basically execute the first right of refusal and obtain the property. It's, it would not be the, our, our decision or the open space committee's decision to actually pursue it, it would just be to recommend based on that criteria. Is that correct?
That is correct. Now, I do not believe we have ever, as a board, said, open space committee.
Yeah.
Please review this specific property. I think it's one of those where it has been brought to their attention by the land use director as our agent.
Right.
To say, hey, this is coming out of chapter, take a look at this. Which I, I don't personally think we as a board need to give that official okay, especially where things are time sensitive.
And, and I think that's the takeaway for me is gaining experience, is that.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm there and saying, yep, we would like you to, you know, score this, if you will. And then my other question, I, I just didn't know, is that at the end of it, or is it, does their recommendation come to us and then we vote on it as well? And then that goes, or do we just go with their vote?
We definitely vote on a recommendation to the select board.
Okay.
I don't know if theirs goes separately to the select board as well.
Okay.
I know it comes to us, and I know we send a recommendation to the select board.
Because it, it sounds like there'll be, it would hit three of the six criteria, and it was still like an informal discussion, so it, it's, I believe it was like, they, they look for three or four hits for it to, to go forward, so.
Okay. Great. And, um, and there's enough time on that for the open space committee to meet again?
Yeah, there was, I guess it would, I'd have to go back and recalculate as, as if we were also going to, you know, weigh in with, with a vote. But, um, the, the, originally the clock was reset, because when they first sent it out, it, something was missing, so the clock didn't start. So we had a little bit more time, like we're probably at about a month right now.
Okay. So, Mr. O'Connell, can we have that on our next agenda regardless?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Because I don't want us to miss our opportunity to chime in.
No, I appreciate that.
Um, great. All right, municipal building design committee.
We were cut short. For whatever reason, Zoom just disconnected. And the chair did not say that he fat fingered the exit, so I'm assuming we have more Zoom issues than we are aware of. But anyways, we did get some discussion in. Just before we got cut off, there was a, a discussion from the representative from the school committee on that group in, in, basically compartmentalized, a, a long list of comments on Facebook. That was part of the discussion, is the, the timing of the presentation being put on Facebook and, and all the, the cuts to the schools, and so there was a large clamor about that, and he was breaking it down. So we're basically trying to get ready to put a, a happy face on this at town meeting. $22 million is a lot of money, whether you've got a happy face or, or not. So, um, basically, that's what, what the group's doing now, is they're trying to get ready for town meeting.
All right, thank you. Capital planning committee has not met since our last meeting. Economic development committee.
Uh, we also have not met since last.
Stormwater task force.
We've received from CEI initial breakdown of what fee schedules and some of the implementation is going to look like. So we've got some really good progress happening there. We're looking to have a kind of, just a five-minute introductory spot at the town meeting, just to tell people, pay attention, this is, this is coming up in the future. Yeah, making progress. It's going well.
Great. Monticent Regional Planning Commission.
Uh, we have not met since our previous meeting, but we do have a special meeting this week on Wednesday, but just to approve travel for MRPC members.
Oh, okay.
To like a, yeah.
Yeah, okay, I'm like, special, oh, yeah, okay.
One of those things, one of those things.
Monticent Joint Transportation Committee.
Uh, we met a couple weeks ago, not much to convey. They did mention that Lunenburg does have a project on the schedule. It looks like they're doing, uh, I, I believe it's a traffic and safety review for Mass Ave from, I'm not gonna remember the cross streets, but basically from Walmart Mountain, Electric Avenue, right? Yes?
Mm-hmm.
To Chase Road, that's what it was, right at the corner with the, with the, the gas station. So they're, they're, they're gonna be there, looking at the cars, looking at the traffic patterns. I'm assuming they're looking mostly at that entrance ramp that kind of comes on from Chase Road. Is that it?
Walmart Mountain?
Well, isn't that what it's called?
Look, look, I'm not saying it wasn't an apt descriptor, but things can be accurate and ruin my soul at the same time.
Is that not what it's called? Because I grew up, that's what it was called.
I mean, I couldn't tell you what the name of the hill is, mind you, so.
Walmart Mountain.
There we go. Okay, minutes approval for our February 10th meeting, ooh. Friends, we're back at the time that our minutes line up with the previous meeting we had.
Amazing what happens when all the positions are filled.
Right? And Logan, I continue to love your, your minutes, by the way.
Much appreciated. I, I am still trying to get them more, I mean, less detailed. Only mildly. I was looking back at some of my old ones from, like, when I first, first started here, and I was like, wow, these are nice and concise, but it's because I didn't understand what was going on.
All right, do people wish more time to review the minutes?
No.
Okay, I'm getting head shakes. So we could have a motion to approve the minutes for the February 10th, 2025 meeting.
Uh, so moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, excellent. Meeting schedule. Yeah, we meet here at 6:00 PM at beautiful town hall, and our upcoming meetings include March 10th and March 24th. Public comment. There is no public here. Board comment concerns, as, small thing to bring up just now, because I remembered it now. In speaking with town council the other week, they, nothing we can do about it now, but there is mild concern that, as, as a reminder, our ADU bylaw needs, that we originally were like, yeah, this looks good. Town council said that is not going to fly with the state, and we need to drastically rework it. There are concerns that, um, about if whatever we need to rework it to legally to meet the state's needs will fit within the four corners of what we put into the warrant. We'll have to see how that goes. That, that's not a known value one way or another yet, but FYI, and we will have to figure that out when the time comes. It could always become a citizen petition and addressed that way. But just kind of putting that on our radar, that was another aspect that came out of my discussion with town council. Along with his reminder that he is always happy to review bylaws and, and help in their crafting if need be. All right. Any other board comments, concerns, please?
Kind of in that same category, is just wondering if maybe in the future, a conversation maybe between the chair and the land use director relative to the reference in a, a recent email indicating that employees are encouraged or directed, I'm not sure what the term was, to refrain from emailing outside of work hours. So I think I'd like to hear more about that. It seems like that's somewhat limiting, and, you know, governments, you know, doesn't work eight to four.
Sure, I can, I can chat with him on that, and he may be able to give us some more, uh, help elucidate.
Yeah.
I'll probably let him feel better first, that seems kind. All right.
I, I, I agree with that. I, I would also like to mention, we're only open four days a week as far as the municipality, so that makes it quite difficult, and I know that, well, the DPW fire and police, I think, are the only ones that work on Fridays. I'm not sure why that had anything to do with that, but, um, yeah, no, I'm, I'm, I'm not. I, I share concerns about that policy. I don't, I think that, that if they're willing and able to, I don't think that they should be told not to. Right? It's great that the staff is who they are, and they are willing and able and do do that, but I, I can't think of any possible legal reason for that to have been asked of.
I can conceive of reasons, legal reasons it could be asked, but I don't know if they're accurate. I, I will follow up on that.
As a volunteer, most of the time that I have to dedicate to this is outside of standard work hours.
Yeah, I think that's a fair point.
And then, one more thing about town council. There is no reason that we cannot request the town council to be here, especially for things like this electric ave application. And, and it's not uncommon, not uncommon for us to consult with town council at our meetings when we're putting bylaws together. And, and of course, we want to be leery of, of his time. He not close, I don't think. But, uh, and then also on the town council, the, the questions that were being asked on that electric ave plan, they're far beyond our purview, far beyond our purview. And the outcome of that far beyond our purview discussion, or whatever it's gonna be, weighs very heavily on whether we'd even considered that application in the first place. Or if we have to consider it because it's other than we thought, then, then we should be getting the full picture and, and, and getting the description of what's intended to become of that entire road. I, I really, people can think what they think, the audience, you can think what you think about my intentions on, on bringing these questions up, but ideally, this is the responsibility that we volunteered for, and we've been elected to do. There are residents on that road that have stopped coming to these meetings, by the way, because, oh, it's on the agenda for the sixth, seventh time, and nothing gets talked, continued. We're making the residents come to meetings and sit sometimes for a half hour to an hour before they're even aware that, oh, they just, nothing's happening, oh, okay, go home. That's not fair. That is not fair. It is not fair to them. It is not fair to us, because we have a lot of stuff that we haven't gotten done, because there's a lot of stuff to do. And, and that's just one example of what I feel, personally, I feel, is a frivolous use of this board and this time. It's, 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 excuse me. I, I feel, I feel very strongly that it should have been initially saw as, seen as an incomplete application. Should not have come before us and, and the public.
It is a little background on that. I can give you what components I have, which isn't a lot. It is only in the context of, if memory serves, because when this originally came to us and they talked about there being the road thing, I admit, my, my first off-the-cuff, just out-loud response was, how could we even look at this? And, and the answer was that, I believe, town council said, yeah, it's, this, it goes to the planning board now, and this is for them to look at.
Is that the only thing they've said about it since?
I'm sorry?
That's the only thing they've said about it since. That's ridiculous.
Yeah, what we, we now have the, we have what town council needs, and that, I had a good meeting the other week with town council, with the land use director, to identify specifically what town council needs, and as we heard from the applicant, they have received that info and sent it to council. So now we should, there were, I mean, clearly some snafus there. Hopefully, that is being addressed, and we will have that answer in hand ASAP. I get your frustration. I do. But I just wanted to, I wanted to give the component the. your frustration. I do. But I just wanted to, I wanted to give the component that I had, which was town council had said, yeah, this should go to the planning board now. Not, I mean, not with any other legal, like, because of X, but no, this is, it should be here. I'll also tell you, I'm working from memory about something from months ago. So.
That's fine. Appreciate it. Thank you.
All right. Anything else? I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Rock and roll. Friends at home, thank you very much. I hope you have a good couple weeks till we see you next. Take care.